Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exits to the, they are to the left of this room in event of emergency. Please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda, extra copies are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify themselves, give their address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it would be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board and only the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will then be closed to the public input and the board will move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed after that point. And as a reminder to everybody on the board, kindly remember to please speak into your microphones. Thank you. Call the first case?
Thank you.
Thank you.
PB 2021-6-1. Upon the matter of request by Daniel Carzon for signage approval to replace existing signage with new logo signage on premises 657 Titus Avenue in the mixed-use commercial district.
Hello, I'm Daniel at 657 Titus Avenue, the venue, and I'm looking for approval for our sign, please.
You want to just give a quick overview?
Of what? The sign or the business?
The sign, alright, and the business.
Okay, well, the business is an event space. It is a, as a, for a seated event, it'd be for thirty people, but if you're having a cocktail party, you can have up to fifty. And the sign itself is, well, cocktail bed without tables and chairs, you can't have tables and chairs in it. It's just, Fire Marshal said you can have up to sixty, but fifty would be way too many, so. However, the sign itself is, I'm using the existing marquee that was there for the business that was there before and the existing lights that were illuminating that sign. So I didn't change any of that, I just stayed within the parameters of the sign that was already there and then made the sign for the venue that's there now.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
I do, just a quick one. What happened to getting permission for the sign?
No, I was, the problem wasn't, I was coming now for the permission and unfortunately, if you were upset with the fact that it was done, then I would have to then move forward with your recommendation, but the artist in which that-
No, I guess my real question to you is how did you not know that you needed permission to put up a sign in a commercial zone?
No, no, I was talking with Donna and to, and my wife, and I own a business right next door. So I had all the parameters before, it was just the securing the artist to do the work. He is a well-known artist in the business and he's very sought after as well. He takes care of his father primarily as his healthcare, because his dad is-
So it was a timing issue around the artist's schedule?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, it was nothing more than that, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
I think what Mr. Richards might be saying is that generally they might make the, make the sign whoever makes the sign and then they keep it wherever. And then after the permission, then they put it up, and it's just a consistency thing.
Right.
I'm not really upset about it, I'm just, you know, concerned about everybody else in there and making sure that the rules are applied consistently.
Yeah, unfortunately, what, how the, the, the way that he was making the sign, it wasn't like a putting it up. It was him actually physically climbing a ladder and painting it on the facade and then securing it and curing it and doing that.
Any other questions? Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
I think you can have a seat, this is a public hearing, correct?
Yes. Thank you.
Sure. Open it for public hearing, anybody who would like to address the board? Was there any correspondence in email or anything?
Um, no, if you, if there were correspondence, Michelle would have communicated that or forwarded on to you, so we have no information or no public comment.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, on PB 2021-061, that we go ahead and approve the application as presented.
Second? Was that Mr.? And just for the record, it is a type two action. All those who approve, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven. No nay, no abstains, and no absent. Just for the record, I noticed Spence and Michael's names are reversed. Oh no, please leave them.
And you thought you could vote wrong?
Trying to get into trouble. Thank you and best of luck with your business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the next case, please.
Sure. PB 2021-06-2. Upon the matter of request by Marathon Engineering, acting as agent for RT Masters, Inc. For preliminary and final site plan approval and floodplain environmental protection overlay district permit to demolish an existing building and to construct a new six thousand square foot building and premises 975 Empire Boulevard in an LLDD, a sales landing development district.
Good evening, Lucas Bushen from Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive in the city of Rochester. I'm joined by Ralph Masters, the applicant. As we discussed two weeks ago, the project is essentially motivated by elevating the building to be above the floodplain. So the project in essence is bringing in some stone fill to the site to raise the building pad and reconstructing the building to be elevated above the floodplain. Part of that reconstruction will include a reorientation of the building to optimize the property and to avoid some of the existing restrictions like the overhead power lines and all that. Some of the, some of the topics that came up at the last meeting were regarding parking, which we've revised the site plan to address that on the plan and to give you those statistics of how the parking is being provided on the site, what's actually required in terms of retail space, and then the extra that we're providing for the employees. There was also discussion about landscaping the property, so we prepared a landscaping plan, put that together, added to the plans that is prepared by Heinrich Fischer. And then I'll help give you an idea of what, what that sort of entry area is going to look like in terms of a green space. And then finally, we put together some, some conceptual building elevations just to give you an idea of what the building's going to look and feel like, where the entry is going to be located, what kind of colors we're thinking about. As we sort of talked about, that's the whole building permit process on this project is going to come quite a bit down the line as there's some other hoops to jump through after we get through site plan approval in terms of obtaining funding and securing financing. So we haven't gone all the way with the architectedals yet, but those will be coming in down the road once we get through site plan approval and, and those other processes. So if there's any questions about the project, we'll be happy to talk about them.
I got, I know it's Lucas, but I forgot your last name, I'm sorry.
Lucas Bushen.
Mr. Bushen, can you, I believe at the workshop you talked about, or Mr. Masters talked about, this is because of flooding?
Right.
Did you talk to that at all?
Yeah, the building floods every once in a while, the FEMA flood elevation is 255 in that area and on the other side of the road is 251. In reality, it floods, you know, maybe, maybe up to a foot, and so we're raising it two to three feet to get above the flooding that occurs on the property. And then above that, we're flood-proofing so that the actual building is protected from up to two feet above the floodplain. That's what's required by FEMA, so there's that extra measure of protection on the property.
And this business has been there for quite a while?
Quite a while, yeah, thirty-plus years.
Any other questions from the board?
A question about the elevations. You said that they were conceptual, but generally whatever we approve here is whatever it is, isn't that right? So it seems like you're not committed to this elevation, which I'm wondering about.
Yeah, is, I guess, is there a concern about that elevation, because in my mind, we are committed-
I don't have a concern with it, it just seemed like you thought that they were, that there might be subsequent changes, you know, that were more than a field change after tonight, and I, that's general, generally whatever is here is what gets approved.
Yeah, thanks for asking that, giving me a chance to clarify, that, that is the intent of the building and the, yeah, we won't go changing that around. What the idea is that it'll-
All of a sudden it's hot pink or something, yeah.
The idea is that the details of exactly how it'll be constructed, those kinds of professionally drawn elevations that you'll see at the building permit stage, those aren't available yet. This is us putting on a plan what the intent is for the building. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a metal, pre-fabricated metal building, so a majority of the facade will be the metal panels, similar to the structure that's there today, but with the architectural base layer up to four feet. That'll show the architectural stone that is sold on the property. And something that's not part of this application currently is for the sign that's going to be mounted to the building, the RT Masters logo. We'll come back once that's finalized and get that approved formally.
I got a couple of questions. The, what we see is the design of the building, that's it? I'm not going to see any more doors, I'm not going to see any more windows, I'm going to see, that's it, right?
No. Yeah, it's, it's the man door to the, to the retail space and then the overhead doors that service the-
So there's one overhead door and one man door, what is front elevation to you?
From the roadway.
Facing north?
Yes.
So it would be the north elevation?
Yeah.
Okay. Because currently, you have one door going in on the north side and there are several overhead doors on the west side and then on the east side. Those are going to be eliminated?
You mean in the existing building?
What you want to do, I mean in the existing building, right, what you're showing me, you've confirmed that that's all that I'm seeing?
Yeah.
I'm confirming with you that you don't want anything else.
There's north and south doors, that's basically how the building is going to function, they drive through-
So I don't have those elevations?
You don't have a south elevation?
I've got a north elevation, do I have an east and west elevation?
You have a east elevation, so those are basically the-
That's what the site elevation is called.
The west elevation will have no doors.
So is the west exactly like the east?
Essentially.
So no doors, just windows?
Yeah.
Can I hop in on a elevation question?
Well, go ahead, yeah.
So if we look at the front elevation, right? We've got a man door towards what is the left side of the page here. That's going to be the main entrance to the, to the building, so there's no, I know today there's a pretty nice entrance element, right, on that, on that building, kind of stone and so on. So this is just an entrance to the retailer, it's just a door flat on a facade, there's nothing else going on around that door.
Correct.
That's what I, I kind of thought there might be a bump out or some-
Something to accentuate the entrance, but-
Thing to accentuate the retail entrance there, you know, just like it, it doesn't have to, similar to what's there now, I mean, there's a large metal structure in the back and then there's this sort of like little punch out where it seems like you would come in and, you know, you see the stone and it's a little more attractive than just a door on the side of a big metal building.
Maybe Brad, he can explain then the front outdoor show area designs by others in a way that would make us feel a lot more comfortable about having a flat-fronted building with no porch or entry cover or anything like that. Maybe you could walk us through that and what that element is going to take?
Yeah, I can speak to the site a lot better than I can speak to the building. The, the site, you know, you have a nice entry area currently where product is sold in the midst of the green areas and it's, you know, there's sort of a, almost, I guess, a garden area around which the product is stored and, and sort of shown outside and that idea is, is kept with the proposed design. That green area is being expanded, right, you're going to have a large lawn area in front of the, in front of the building. So really, the goal is to sort of relieve the front of the property from being just covered in impervious, as it mostly is today. And yet, to break up the site and to create a, a front yard, essentially. In terms of what the building looks like, what we've put on the page is as far as I can tell you about it today.
Yeah, no, I get that, I get, so this whole area should serve, one thing I can tell you I'm not crazy about and I'm going to ask that get removed, are the products facing the street that just the back of those boards are facing the street, it looks like, it, it looks good once you get in there, but if I'm driving by there, there'd be no reason for me to want to stop, that, I'm sure it's not anything anybody desires, but for right now, it works. I'm assuming that some of that product will be moved back onto this show area that is currently where the offices are, everything that is forward of the overhead lines, right?
Right, the, the product currently follows the driveway which comes in-
Right.
Right in front of the building, and so that area will be eliminated. It won't be a drive-through lane anymore, so this space can be more creatively set up to draw people in to buy the product.
Okay, so, and currently as it's set up, it, to me, the retail happens on the west side of the building and the manufacturing delivery stuff happens on the east side of the building, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so I have that down, so what's going to happen with those two functions now on the current setup? Because you're telling me you don't want any doors, so everything's going to happen on the north side of the building?
I don't want any doors.
Well, you want doors on the north side, am I, am I missing something here?
I, I guess I might be misunderstanding the question.
Alan, are you asking, is there going to be any overhead doors on the south side of the building?
Right.
Yes.
Or where the manufacturing part?
Yeah, the, the trucks will be able to drive through the building from south to north, and there's, there's one exit on the north side. The one overhead door you see on the front elevation.
On the north side?
Yeah.
So people are, the trucks are going to enter, just describe to me what they're going to do.
Well, mostly what they do is loop around the property and drop off product. The, the trucks that need to get into the building will have that option on the west side of the building to drive straight through it. And then there will be other overhead doors on the back of the building, just like garage style so that you can get in and out.
Okay, so under the current setup, there's only going to be this one part that's asphalt on the east side of the building?
Yeah.
The truck will come in on the east side of the building, proceed to the south side, drive into the building itself?
If, if it needs to, yeah, from the south side, or it can loop to the west side of the building.
So there'll be a drive area on the-
Yeah, it's, it's all outdoor storage today.
Is it going to be paved or what is that going to be?
All stone.
It's all stone, currently that's basically what's over there now.
Exactly.
Alright.
Yes, there's a lot of storage out there, so that'll be reconfigured, mostly pushed to the rear of the property so that that area can allow large trucks, fire trucks, any larger vehicle that needs to access the property can now loop around the back and out.
So that, that gate on the, the western curb cut, is that gate typically kept closed so that the public doesn't drive in there?
Correct.
The public drives in the main entrance and stops controlled by the gate around that building?
It's now locked, but that's what it's there to, to do, yeah.
I've got a few questions if you're-
Oh yeah, go ahead, just, and you know me.
Something, Alan, what were you talking about? You didn't want to see something?
At the front of the property right now, and I know that the owners know about this too, when you drive in and you, into the property off of the 404, you start heading east to go into the property and that's where their displays are, well, they're on big boards. The back of the board is facing Empire Boulevard and it just, it's not an attractive look. I'm sure that they don't feel it's attractive, but it probably serves their purpose as well. Mr. Chairman? Yeah, you can see.
Oh, okay.
It looks like at an airport.
But that's all getting replaced, I just want clarification, that's all getting replaced with green space?
Correct.
That's what, yeah, that was my question, and I just, I didn't want it there anymore, I'm sure they don't want it there, and I was making sure that the front of the property is the solution that they've come up with for that element.
Yeah, yeah, they want the front of the building to look nice and-
And they also want to sell product, I mean, I get, there's all these competing things going on on one piece of property, so.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification, I'm sorry, Mr. Ebel.
No, no.
Okay.
Um, so the site elevation you provided, is that typical for both sides, east and west?
Yeah, that's typical for both sides.
Okay. You denote a sign on the north side of the property, on the plans between the driveways, is that existing or is that a sign you're planning on having?
It would be existing.
It's an existing, I did not see it on the Google Earth, but it might be on the Google, it might just be a bad map, but that would be existing. Okay, not planning on installing a sign?
Correct.
Okay. I see you have silt fence all the way along the east, south, and west property lines right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to ask that along the north side here, where the edge of this water is in between the driveways, you also install silt fence?
Okay, yeah, we can protect that in line.
Okay, so I'm going to, that'll be a condition on the approval.
Okay.
I do see that the county sent some notes over, I'm not sure if you got them from the government?
Yeah, we reviewed them.
Okay, they brought up an Article 24 permit, you are in the DUC wetland, I don't know if you are applying for an Article 24 permit? I know it's not really our business, but-
Yeah, we'll, we'll verify whether that's already active on the property or something that we have to obtain, but absolutely.
Okay, cool, and then my last question is snow storage, are you, is RT Masters open in the winter, I assume it is? And where are you planning on storing snow?
I'd say most-
I gotcha.
I would say mostly around the edges of the property. It, it really depends on where the product ends up being stored in that rear yard, but there's a lot of room on this property.
On the south side of the building, is what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I've got one more question here. So if I look at these elevations, right, this is, it looks like it's a gabled building with a center, center ridge, right?
Correct.
Which is telling me I got a low eve along the north and a low eve along the south side. I don't see anything on your utility plan that talks about catching downspout water or runoff, what's, what's going on with that?
Yeah, that'll, that'll all discharge to the stone, give it a chance to infiltrate back into the ground.
So you got, you got five-ish feet, I can't tell, it's not really dimension that I see here, but of concrete directly adjacent to the building?
Correct.
So it's going to spill on the concrete and then you want it to get to the stone and infiltrate on the stone?
Yeah.
Will it infiltrate on that type of stone that the trucks are going to be driving on, isn't that pretty much?
Well, it doesn't infiltrate today because it's flooded a lot of the times, right?
But if you were to put down, I don't know, whatever, with fine in between, is it?
Yeah, I guess infiltrate maybe isn't the right word, it doesn't go back into the, the ground because we've got water everywhere around here. There's nowhere to, to really pipe water here unless we bring it out to the ditch, which I don't, I don't think would be possible. So, so the idea is putting it over a rough surface that is at least semi-permeable will slow down the water and give somewhere for the dirt to settle out? But I, I guess to your point, maybe piping it around or over the sidewalk in some way would be a good idea to avoid a slip hazard.
That's, that was my first major concern, is that it's not directly onto that, and if that's the sidewalk that employees are walking around or whatever, it could very well be a safety hazard.
But we, we don't want to create any new discharge points for, for stormwater, so as much as we can just allow that to dissipate on the property.
It'd be nice on the north side of the building if you could channel it into your new garden.
Certainly, yeah.
Just a thought.
This building is larger than the one that you have currently, right?
Slightly larger, maybe?
Okay. Same thing.
What is it, six thousand square feet, I believe the-
Six thousand, yeah.
The structure today.
So it'll be the same amount?
It's got to be about the same, I mean-
So you're not going to be, you're not going to be collecting any additional water on the roof?
So, yeah, certainly not. Equally impervious, pretty imposed.
How high is, how high is it from grade to the bottom of the elevation that we're seeing here?
There should be dimensions on, on, I believe it's twenty feet to the eve height?
Twenty feet?
Sixteen plus four, Brad.
So you're saying, oh, so you're saying that this, okay, so it's not, well, that doesn't make sense to me, at least. So there's four feet, right, but then isn't there a ramp that goes up to the door?
Yes.
So how, from the bottom of that door, from the top of the ramp, how, how much, how, what amount is that climbing? Like, how much are we going to see below? Do you see, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the bottom of the stone will be finished grade around the whole building. The elevation of the grade around the building should be equal all the way around.
But then-
There's no stepped entrances, it's, it's all flush.
But there's a ramp, right, going up to the door, so how, how much height are we traveling on that ramp?
The ramp at the back?
At the front door.
Oh, I see.
Because isn't the show area and those items a little bit below what we're seeing on this front? Like, they sit down here somewhere, right?
Well, someplace it's got to go three or two feet.
So the grade at the parking area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two fifty, two point eight, grade at the top is two fifty five point one.
So about four feet?
It's about two, two feet, two and change.
Okay. So that, that ramp is only going up two feet, you know, overall?
Correct, but it's at five percent maximum slope.
Right, so it takes a while to get there. And the stone along the base, this sort of like water table, does that go all the way down to the parking lot grade? Or what happens between the bottom of that stone and the, like, the, um, this landscaped area?
This landscaped area will be flush with the sidewalk.
Oh, I see, so that'll be, that'll be higher?
Yeah, this whole area is retained by the ramp.
Okay, understood.
Over here, there will be a small- Over here, there will be a small retaining wall with a railing.
Okay.
So the, the visibility, a- as you look at the building from the road.
I'm not gonna see anything.
Foot height from right there, yeah.
Okay.
A- and that's true all around, um, there will be an additional small retaining wall that you'll see on this side.
And the water lines repeated on the east and west elevations?
For for the downspouts?
No, for the um stone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that's a good.
That's why it's reflected here, I'm just confirming that information.
I'd I'd confirm that with Ralph, Ralph, is the idea to wrap that stone around both sides of the building?
If you're gonna speak, you gotta please come up and state your name.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ralph Masters, um, so to answer that question, the intent was to put the stone veneer on the front north side of the building facing the road where it will be seen. The side that would be on the uh west of the building, uh facing the Bayfront Restaurant would remain concrete where I would be storing product up against that concrete wall. Um, it would be natural stone product, currently we store it on the western retaining wall on our current property. It's Indiana limestone slabs, uh, the reason we store it there is because they come seated upright. We put them on a slight incline back towards the wall, so no, I will not be putting stone on the west side of that concrete elevation, uh, like I said, it would damage the product that we put on it, so uh, to further answer the question, on the opposite side of the building, the east elevation, the grade will be right up to the stone band that you see on there. So there won't be anything visible below that, so the water table will continue on that one side of the building. Not on the west side of the building, so as you come down the hill from Aronac quite, you would see it on the the uh eastern elevation and the north elevation. Did you want me to answer any of the other questions you guys asked?
No, but now that brings up another question, if that's a metal building and you're gonna put limestone for storage onto the west side, what's protecting the building?
Concrete.
So it's gonna be.
It's a masonry wall with metal above, so in that elevation that Luke has presented, the gray area is gonna be a stone veneer area.
On the west elevation.
Correct.
Okay. That part we just didn't know, because we don't have.
I I understand, and this is not for architectural plan approval, I don't have architectural plans yet, I can't move forward with them until I get site plan approval. So as far as the drainage for the watershed, any bump outs on the building, obviously I don't feel like opening a door and having three feet of snow come from the roof on top of me. So the design was intended when we discussed with the architect to put a cricket over the front entryway. Alright, something to divert water from right over the entry door, alright, again, I was under the impression that we were here for site only, um, as far as building and architectural drawings, I had thought we were coming back to present those when we actually had them. These are just kind of renditions of what color scheme there's gonna be, the fact that we're adding green space to the property more so than it's already there, um, and as far as the drainage goes, uh, like I said, uh, you guys had said, put it into the garden area, I'm sure we could do that. Um, we need to actually set forth moving forward, and the only way to do that is to put down a large deposit on the metal building uh kit. And that's when we get architectural drawings of that, I give those to an architect, he details in the water table and all the elevations with the water drainage from the roof line, so I'm like at step one right now. As far as your southern uh exposure, alright, those overhead doors will all be in the back, so they're not an eyesort of the property. That's the way I intended it, alright, as far as the fabrication room goes, where there's an overhead door there, sometimes we bring in materials that we actually need to use both doors, cause you can't physically get them in and out and turn around in there. So that's why we put one overhead door on the north, snow removal, snow we always stack up on the south side of the property. Uh, and we will continue to do that, I mean, we usually pile it up depending on the winter, um, and in some cases, uh, it actually is melted by the water coming in from the bay. Um, you know, I never really had set forth uh getting architectural drawings because I don't wanna put that money out if we can't even get site approval.
I think I have a better understanding of what you're asking us to do tonight.
Are are you able to move forward with preliminary approval, or do you need the whole thing?
Right, so I think, I think one of the things that we just need to clarify as a board is it is part of our purview to be reviewing the elevations of the building.
The architecture of your building.
So that's, that's, that's where we're, I guess, kinda trying to understand the information you're bringing.
Okay.
And where you're at, so when we give site plan approval, that is also approval for the look of the building. So it's this board's purview to review that.
Okay.
Some of the permitting stuff, we will refer back to the permitting agency for their approval, if they don't grant you approval, then whatever you've gotten from us is worthless.
Okay. So basically, moving forward, after we have our discussion here tonight, we have to move forward with the EC approvals, and then Army Corps of Engineer approvals, so in the meantime of that process is when I would be doing architecturals
Yep.
to bring to you, um, so that you guys can actually see what the physical building will look like. So I think, I think back to Brad's question then, then does, does receiving preliminary approval get you guys what you need?
We need a set of signed plans in order to move forward with the project. So I, ideally, if what we've presented today can satisfy the board's concerns with the look and appearance of the building, then we move forward.
Yeah, we definitely need better.
Right, I think the problem is, is it, it, it doesn't, right, I mean, we're talking about that there's you know, possibly a roof element or a cricket or something over the entrance, and we don't know, I mean, we're hearing where there's concrete, but we would have to condition that and write all that out since it's not on paper from you guys to us, so that's why we're trying to figure out as a board, how do we get you what you need, but also make sure that we still have our ability to review this other stuff. And our only mechanism, and I'm glad to have the deputy attorney correct me here, but is to give a preliminary approval, which is a big overview of everything, usually with a list of things that are left that you have to come back to us for, and then you come back at some point for final approval, but you cannot get signed plans until you get final approval. So correct me if I'm wrong on any of that.
Yeah.
Carrie.
That's what we need.
We, we can have preliminary site plan approval, and that can be signed with site, that we've had in other projects that are phased. And Steve, just certainly jump in if that's not accurate, but preliminary um site plan approval that gets signed off by everyone where the building is, where the building's going to be, it has all the basic elements of the physical layout of the site, um, and then with the understanding that architectural details haven't been provided and need to come back to the board before we would be ready to issue a building permit for the project. But Steve, certainly provide guidance if, cause we have other projects that have been done in phased, in a phased way, and so they've gotten.
That's usually like future buildings, that's what I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's accurate if there's, if there's other considerations that, that you have that, um, you know, need to be, need to be considered. Um, certainly a preliminary would be appropriate procedurally, um, but.
Stone if it gets them what they're looking for, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Understand.
Yeah, but like, like.
Preliminary approval generally comes with a list of things that are left to do, and it's sorta just like come back with the checklist and you're done, it's not like if we issue preliminary, unless you divert to a pink building, as somebody jokingly said, that, that we're gonna deny that, right, I mean, once you've gotten preliminary, you've worked out the majority of what's going on, um, you just have to check off those, those other.
Although we did issue preliminary, and I don't know it got the project that was still under consideration on Ridge Road. And he's moving forward, I mean, we don't have the final architecture.
It was basically for the same reason, because of the
Yeah.
elevations weren't complete, that's why they got preliminary.
Right.
I mean, if staff believes that they can go with preliminary, I'm there tonight.
Yeah.
And I still have a question about that storage area in the back, I just need to make sure that the guys that signed this letter actually own that piece of property. Um, is one thing in my mind, and I don't, I'm sure staff can figure that out pretty quickly. Um, and that's not a big deal, I mean, just move the stuff if it's not, um, but I, yeah, I don't.
I just wanna make sure we're doing the mechanism for the town property.
The guy on the left is a lot smarter than me.
No, I mean, obvi- it's, it, it, it becomes the, the comfort of, obviously, of, of the board, if, you know, you, you can obviously do a you know, a final with condition, or if you have a substantial amount of questions, then preliminary is, you know, probably your safer, safer option, um, but that's obviously up to the discretion of the.
I think it's really hard to condition elevations, it's very nebulous and it's not concrete.
Bring up that I still have questions on as well, but.
We, we, and if this were, I mean, any project that, we would, we would give them preliminary, I mean, it's not deviation from the normal here.
Right.
So why don't we cover the rest of the questions and then come back to what we're gonna do?
Alright. So. When I formally get your question answered, Mister Richards?
Oh, did, yeah, it, do, the guys that signed off on the letter, do we know that they technically own the land? Are they just giving you permission to store?
Yes, sir, they do own the land.
Okay.
Perfect.
That's all I wanted to hear.
I had two other questions, one, um, at, at workshop, we talked about landscaping plan, and I see you've got the blow up up here in the corner of C two point O, um, just, just to clarify, and I'll let Mister Huber and Mister Evelyn talk a little bit more about the actual plant's needs and so on, if they have any questions, but um, tha- that's the area of focus, right, so there's no other proposed landscaping.
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you, and go ahead, you got a question on?
Yeah, I was just gonna follow up on your lead there, I think that he was, uh, is this crab apple the same one that you're in, in front of the um, place now, are you trying to um transplant it?
Um, if it's possible to save it.
Yeah.
If, you know, it, I would like to do.
Yeah, 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 totally, I just.
Can't, I mean, it's sentimental to me.
Absolutely, no, and also this is a landscape area, a lot of times on site plan, we won't let people plant crab apples. And uh, but this is a totally different situation, and I just wanted to point that out because there will be other applications where we will tell people that they can't plant crab apples, but in this one, it's totally fine.
Parking lots.
Yeah, yes.
Don't plant in parking lot.
Don't part of me, right.
Uh, my, my only other question is regarding sight lighting. So I see the, the elevations kind of indicate a couple of lights, um, but normally we have whatever lights are gonna be on the full property and then a photometric of that.
Yeah, th- there's no sight lighting proposed, it's just the building mounted lights, and those are operational during business hours.
Understood, those, those still get a photometric plan that come, that comes to the board.
We can put together a photometric plan.
There's a floodlight currently facing the building on the north elevation, is that going to stay?
The one in the right of way?
No, it's not, it's on the property.
From the ground.
Yeah.
No, that won't stay, that'll be.
Okay.
Redone, yeah.
I noticed you had a flagpole, are you gonna light the flagpole or no?
I mean, it's, I believe my patriotic duty to put a flagpole in, uh, that one we remove every night because first time we put it out there, it got stolen, so we now have one that we remove every night before we go home.
Any other questions?
I know, there were quite a few things that came from the town engineer and from the county, were you able to address all of them?
Well, so we got, does the applicant have, the town engineer sending comments that unfortunately came in today?
Yeah, I reviewed those.
That doesn't.
They were responding to the updated plans that were received by the applicant on Friday.
Sure.
So they, um, the, um, they did send a separate copy to the applicant's engineer.
Yep, and I reviewed it, I don't have any concerns addressing that with Lobella.
Okay. Nothing jumped out at you, was anything crazy, okay, same question with the county comments?
Yeah, same, uh, we did follow up with the county health department regarding their comment about a waste site. And clarified that essentially the requirement on the property's gonna be to uh, to notify the contractor that if anything's encountered.
Right, and you don't plan on really digging, so you shouldn't really.
Correct, yeah, and, and there is no known waste site, it's just an area that may be susceptible to it.
It, it appears a number of times in the comments, both from Lobella and actually from our conservation board, about you um, investigating tying into public sewer, have you looked into that?
Yeah, I was talking uh with Ralph about that, it has been investigated, it's been priced and was ultimately uh, in, in the past, on the property, even in conjunction with the neighbor. Uh, to sort of, that, that would be the only feasible way for a private owner to do such a thing. And it was not feasible, especially for, uh, this application is one bathroom and a sink.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's.
Cost prohibitive.
Absolutely, astronomically.
And the septic is, or the retaining tank you said was checked, is my recollection?
It's, yeah, it'll be replaced.
Okay, it's being replaced, got it.
I think you addressed this earlier, but I'm just confirming that there's no new lighting on the site except for what's mounted on the building, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
And, um, the signage, I know that these are conceptual, but I don't know if, you know already if it lights up, um, or not?
Um, I haven't gotten that far in exploring that yet.
Okay.
Um, I was kinda hoping to just put a light to shine down on it from the top of the building.
Okay.
But, uh, I mean, again, in exploring different options for lighting, you know, I'll look at different things that are available. And in response to the sewer question, uh, during the workshop, uh, Ms. Ivors said that she was gonna reach out to the Commissioner of Public Works, uh, Mister Kylie, and see if the town was willing to run sewers down to uh us in Aronac quite. And in that case, it would change things entirely, because then I wouldn't have to pay at my expense to run sewage underneath Aronac quite creek.
So just to clarify, the question was, I was gonna ask the commissioner if there was a sewer district located in that area, and if the property could be connected, not who was gonna be running the sewer line. I think Mister Kylie would um, never let me attend a meeting again if that was uh the case, so I did, we did reach out to Department of Public Works, there is um an LD, La Salle's Landing sewer district located in that vicinity, however, the, um, it was not determined yet whether or not this property has been a contributing you gotta be a contributing paying member when it was first formed, and if not, then you're not part of the sewer district, so um, I'm not sure if, what the cost of being added to the sewer district might be from a and, and also from a process standpoint, I know that, that's a, a process that goes through town board when a new property is being added to an existing district, just so the board's aware.
Well, can we find out if he has been a?
I have, um, I sent, so with, with seeing the, the planning board, or excuse me, the town engineer's comments, um, I forwarded um the, that, the memo and asked the commissioner to take a look at that specific bullet point and get back to me, so I apologize, um, we don't have that answer yet.
So, I got one more question for the town, yeah, so just to make sure that they got everything they need when we're done tonight. I noticed in the county, it said something about because it's located near Penfield or within a certain boundary of Penfield.
Yes, so.
Did you notify them?
Uh, so Michelle Nichols did send communication to Jim Costello, who is the Director of Development Services for the town of Penfield. He acknowledged receipt of the materials that were provided to him, and he provided no comment or response. Um, and so usually in, in our line of work, no news is good news, or no news is no comment. Um, but they, we haven't received any response back, and he did acknowledge receiving it.
So do they need anything formally, or is that good?
No, it's more of a, it's more of a courtesy, um, and for the, this isn't, uh, you know, if this were a type one action, then it would be absolutely required because they potentially could be in an interested agency, but it's an enlisted action for seekers, so that wasn't, it's not absolutely required.
Carrie, I have two quick things for you, um, the first one, I'm relatively positive is cleaned up, thanks to the engineer. Um, that we talked about parking and variances at uh workshop, but I believe that with the calculations provided, we're all set there, correct?
That's my understanding as well, um, I will, we, I will confirm that, um, but yes.
Okay, and my second question is, we also talked about whether there was a need to clean up a variance for lot coverage on this?
The, um, oh, the, what, my understanding though is the, um, for the eighty, for the twenty percent, for the eighty percent, um, yeah, I apologize, um, the, I don't, I have to. Yeah, I apologize. Um, the, I don't know, I have to, let me just check my notes really quick, cause I don't know if I have, I know we talked about it. To forgive me, Michelle went out one one half day too soon, so hold on one second.
According to their zoning code, it says that there's a requirement of seventy percent. And there's, you know, they're approving it. I'm I'm just saying, is there a need for a, you know, cleanup variance, that's all.
Right.
I don't think so.
What are they at, percentage?
So so it's requirement according to their list here is um, maximum lot cover seventy percent. Previous or existing is eighty six and it their proposed is eighty two. So they're making it better. But I know in the past, when there has not been a variance granted.
For maximum impervious uh, shall not exceed eighty percent um, in that building, third street, third. So I assume you're talking about like a.
Yeah, I'm just going off what they had listed on their.
Guys gotta talk into the microphone, so.
Yeah, I I it's not this board's pur- board's purview. I'm just trying, I know in the past when there's been a preexisting nonconforming issue and there's been essentially major redevelopment of the site.
Yeah, yeah.
Just for clarification sake, so that there's no issue for them down the road if they go to sell the property or anything happens, that they have all the variances in mind. That's all. I just wanna make sure it's done so that they don't have a problem in the future if they need to.
You need to talk into the microphone.
Actually, just as a reminder, this is the La Salle's Landing District and I thought when we reviewed it, and I do apologize, that there were actually, there was a lot of purview given to this board for buffering and for different requirements. And that there wasn't a designated or specified lot coverage percentage required for impervious versus um, pervious.
Yeah, I know we talked about some of that at the workshop and I'm just.
Making sure.
To make sure, cause I didn't know we officially answered that, that's all.
Yeah, so we we did review, and I thank you, we did review and other districts, other commercial districts, it's a a specified number and in this district, it talks about a lot of different things. But no impervious um, coverage requirement.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Better to check twice.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? At this point, I'll open it for public input. If you gentlemen can please have a seat. Anybody who would like to address the board regarding this application, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Nick Masters. We pay taxes on that property. I have a question for Bradley. What is it with the crab apple tree? Mr. Hoisek painted that years ago and.
There is no.
He just passed away.
No, no, there's no concern whatsoever with the crab apple tree. In fact, um.
You know, we keep trimming that every year in his honor, so.
Yeah, no, actually, what I wanted to, what the the per- the purpose was, in many um, site plans, we won't allow people to plant crab apples. And in this one, this is a special exception. And I wanted to go on record saying that because sometimes uh, people say you let them do it over here, but you didn't let them do it over here. And the reason is specifically the reason that you're referencing. So there is no concern. In fact, it's a great opportunity to use something and keep it on site.
Well, I just wanted to go on record and lighten this up a little bit.
Anybody else who would like to address the board? I don't think there was any write-ins, correct? Just double checking.
That's my that's my understanding as well. Michelle would have forwarded those to you and she was here during the day today, so she would have sent any last minute. Um, and I'm happy to check really quickly as well.
Why don't you do that before I close? I don't think we received anything, correct? Anybody?
No, no, I can tell you we didn't.
Just take a second to check and then we'll.
Faster, Carrie.
My computer's not responding so quickly. We have nothing to show here in our folder. I just checked right now. It's completely empty.
Based on that, I'll close the public hearing. You're welcome to address the crab apple comment if you want to. But other than that, there's nothing to address. Um, so Carrie, oh, did you want us to say something?
Yeah, I I guess I I'd just like to to close out sort of what we're looking for here today and make sure that we loop back on that. So I ideally, we'd like to have a signed set of plans, understanding that may not be the the town's process if we go the preliminary route. So I guess wha- what we'd like to to ask for is an approval to move forward. Um, with whatever whatever requirements written in that bring us back here with some more final um, architectural plans that will address these concerns that are still outstanding. So whether that's done through conditions or through a future final approval that's put off, um, we we'll do it that way. So thanks for your time and we appreciate all the questions and and interest in the property.
Real quick, before you go, I just wanna make sure again that we're getting you what you need.
Yeah.
Um, so when when you say you're looking for approval tonight so that you can proceed on other things, right? What what's the tie, I guess, that's preventing you from doing those other things? I wanna make sure that a preliminary approval gets you what you want, that's all.
Yeah, the funding is contingent on an approved site plan. So that is gray, right? That's why I would like to have a signed set of plans, cause cause that would um, that would be very clear. But a preliminary resolution would would meet that requirement as well, I'd imagine. So um, if that's the way we have to move forward.
Okay, that helps a lot. Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Definitely, yes, I remember this, yeah.
So Carrie, um, is regarding seeker, do you wanna talk to that?
I I certainly can. Um, one of the issues in preparing seeker analysis um, for this board is we were waiting the town engineer's comments. And there were a couple of issues or that were potentially outstanding that we needed to get resolution on. But if the board wants to move forward with a preliminary decision, we can review the seeker analysis as it stands right now. The, this is an existing developed site. Um, the project is proposing to bu- put, replace the existing six thousand square foot building with another newer six thousand square foot building. From an architectural perspective and impact on the um, neighborhood, it's similar in in kind and and will have a have a ma- and a similar look to it. And albeit maybe even improved with the landscaping and the features that are um, suggested. Um, it's at this point, the project, um, there's some clarification that needs to happen with respect to from the based on the town engineer's comments about whether or not um, a sweep would be required. Because of the fact that it's stone is being added, it may not be, because the area of disturbance may be defined in such a way that it technically and legally from a construction standpoint would be less than one acre. So no sweep would be needed. Um, if one were to be required, that would be reviewed by the town engineer and the town um, stormwater management person. That happens to be our commissioner of, our deputy commissioner of public works, Aaron McGee. Um, and so we understand that the town wouldn't let the project move forward with anything that wasn't compliant from a stormwater management perspective. Um, the issue of uh, the underground tank versus sewer, it sounds like that that was one other question. We weren't sure what the direction would be. And in order to evaluate the impacts, you needed to know the answer. The, there's an existing septic uh, system. The project is proposing it to be replaced. That would be something that's governed and adm- um, administered or and overseen and monitored by the Department of Health, Monter County Department of Health. And so they will ensure it is done properly um, and in accordance with all the applicable reg- regulations. Um, and to the extent that the project requires other DEC or other Army Corps, other and other um, permitting, those agencies would ensure that the project conforms to the environmental review and um, and and I honestly, the environmental protection required through those permitting processes. So if the board wanted to move forward with a decision, that would be the information I would provide to you in terms of making a determination of significance. So if you feel ready to make the decision on a preliminary site plan, you do need to complete seeker prior to making that decision.
I have a question about the lot coverage.
Oh.
What I found in the code says, um, the total overall ground coverage of all principal and accessory buildings, parking areas and other impervious surface on any lot shall not exceed s- it shall not exceed seventy percent of the total lot area.
Where did you find that? Cause I'm looking in the very bottom.
It um, yeah, down. Um, it does say we have discretion over height setbacks, um, a number of things. But it doesn't, I don't know, I I base, at least the way that I'm reading it, it doesn't seem that we have discretion over the lot coverage. It's letter D under.
Yeah, it's in it's in the dimensional.
Yeah, two thirty-five dash thirty-five dot three.
Give me, I'm missing that. I do apologize. As I stated during the workshop, this is my first time working with the La Salle's Landing, so I don't have it committed to memory like I do the others.
Is that right?
And I do apologize.
Yeah, yeah.
So one of the issues if is if the this did require um, zoning relief, um, that could be condi- that could be a condition of the preliminary preliminary approval as well. Can navigate the zoning process to achieve that. I'd also like to take a look to see whether or not, and and certainly if our deputy town attorney wants to chime in as to whether or not this is one of the areas where the planning board has purview.
Yeah, I I know, I noticed they um, there's a few exceptions in there that gives the uh, the planning board sort of variance, zone typical zoning board um, sort of duties. Um, I would have to double check to see if this is something that is within their, within their purview. Uh, certainly, like on section one thirty-six there where um, it gives it gives you guys the ability to to s- approve variances for purposes of flooding. Um, you know, that's certainly one of the exceptions, whether this falls with within it and and within the uh, planning board's uh, purview, I'd have to have to double check. If that's what, if that's what you were um, alluding to, Carrie?
Yeah, and I was looking at further above. It gives some leeway. I think what we could do is if you wanted to consider a condition that to the extent that the project requires zoning board. Uh, a variance to the zoning board, that that be obtained. Um, and it certainly could be done either con- um, congruently or it could be done before the the ne- next time they visit um, for the final site plan approval with the architectural renderings. And any other details that are being requested by the board.
Make that part of the approval process, the same way we would with DEC or anything else.
Yeah, and.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think we're, we've been down that road enough times. I think we're comfortable with it.
So now, let's go, can we go back to seeker though? So are you gonna walk us through the seeker then with conditions? I'm trying to understand.
I just walked you through it. So those are all the issues that we would typically review as part of a seeker analysis. So then that's what you would be using to make your determination of significance, whether you wanted to have a negative declaration or a positive. I didn't end with my sentence of, based on the information that we reviewed in the application, we recommend a negative declaration and no further analysis would be needed for the site plan.
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
That's the sentence you were waiting for. I do apologize. I did admit that last sentence.
Does anybody on the board have any questions regarding seeker? Nope. Okay. With that, um, regarding seeker, we can vote then, correct? But is there conditions in the seeker?
No, um, the, somebody needs to make a motion though to have a.
I just wanna know if we go forward.
I could go ahead and do that.
Do you you wanna do the seeker before?
We have to do seeker before we do preliminary.
Okay, yeah.
Unless you wanna do it illegally.
Oh, no, no.
That way. Whatever works, though, I'm um, that we would go ahead and um, on this project, um, declare it to be a type two with a positive declaration. A negative.
Negative declaration, please, yeah.
I was seeing if anybody was paying any attention.
Okay.
A negative declaration.
And just to clarify, it's an unlisted action.
Unlisted action.
You got almost all of it correct, though. Other than that, we're good.
Yep.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. There are no.
That perfect? I don't know why you didn't get lots of seconds on that.
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, any abstained?
Mr. Chairman, who seconded? I was looking down. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Oh, you did.
Yep. None opposed, none abstaining, and none absent. Seeker passes seven to zero. I'll entertain a motion regarding this.
So I took notes. I'll throw one out there if.
Good.
See what I can do here. Um, regarding application PB two zero two one dash zero six dash two, uh, I would make the motion that we provide a preliminary site plan approval with the following conditions. No displays along the roadside that block the view of the property.
No displays along the, I'm sorry?
Uh, roadside.
That blocks the view, is that what you said?
Yeah, the view of the property. Can we say north property line?
I was just gonna go there.
I'm fine with that. Yep.
And I don't wanna limit that. I mean, if it's landscaping, we should be able to allow that too.
Yeah, that's why I said displays. I figured that covered what we discussed in open forum, that that would, it's those.
You're doing a better job than I would.
Okay.
So it's easy for me to criticize.
That sill fencing be provided along the north property line. Along the north area of disturbance.
Yep.
duly corrected and accepted? Thank you.
Okay.
Um, that a lighting photometric plan be provided to this board.
Okay.
That full building elevations be provided to this board.
Okay.
That any new signage must come back to this board.
So any new signs requires board approval?
Yep. Uh, that any other applicable county, state, or municipal permit be obtained as required.
Including town.
I'm gonna call for the variance out separately. I worded that.
Any applicable county?
Uh, ca- state, county, or other municipal permit or approval be obtained. Good. And then my last one is that the applicant work with town staff and town attorney to determine if a zoning variance is required for lot coverage. And if so, obtain said variance. Those were my notes.
And obtain if necessary, is that all you?
Yep.
So I wrote down one other note regarding downspouts. Did you get your answer on that or on the sidewalks?
Not real, I mean, it's it's a, it was a safety answer. Um, I think it's for the engineer to work out with.
I think with the elevations come. I think when the elevations come back, we can question it at that point. Um, on the elevation point, can I just add that we get a list or, um, examples of the materials being used on the exterior?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just add that as a separate one, Alan, is that okay?
Yep.
And, uh, was there any concerns about marking this, those, no storage, or we're fine with the answer?
I'm not too concerned. I've taken up plenty of property for that.
Okay. With that, unless there's any other comments?
I'll offer you a second.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. So for preliminary site plan approval, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Any absent? So it's approves seven to zero. Truly hope that's what you need to move forward, and best of luck moving forward. Thank you. Take a two-minute break, if you could.
Minutes, uh, I move that we approve them as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
The May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one minutes, uh, I move that we approve them with one edit on the third page, under the conditions, that the bicycle crosswalk path be striped. Not.
No, okay.
But if you can make that edit for us.
I would second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved.
Would you like this?
Noted, I will certainly take that.
Can you be stripped while you use the striped crosswalk?
So Carrie, can you?
Pretty sure this is how they don't render.
Oh, we need Donna for the notes for the next one, or?
No, I can, I can, I can do all the things. I can, yes, happy to proceed. I'll read the, um, it's a town board referral. Um, upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, PLLC, acting as agent for PEM LLC, for a special use permit to operate a gasoline service station and car wash on premises twenty-five ninety Culver Road in a C business district. So at the, uh, this month's town board meeting, um, the application was, was received related to the special use permit that is needed for, in this zoning district. So obviously, the town board granted a rezone back in late twenty twenty. That was a matter that was referred to this board, positive referrals received. They then went ahead and navigated the whole site plan review process. And toward, uh, at some point during the site plan review process, I was like, I had to remind them that they also needed to come back to the town board for the special use permit. That is what they're doing now. So a little bit out of order, typically it would be rezone, the si- the, the town board referral, or the, excuse me, the special use permit would be applied for simultaneously with the site plan. And for whatever reason, that did not happen with this applicant. So we made sure that they knew that that, this step was required.
Okay. Any discussion? I know you're gonna.
Yeah, I think it goes without saying, but I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
So exactly what are we approving?
So this is the, the, this is the, the special use, right? So it's in a permitted use in this district. It needs the.
Twenty-four hour service station for the?
The car, the car wash and the gasoline service station are the two things triggering a special use permit through the town board.
Are they applying for the twenty-four hour dine-in portion?
It's not subject to a special use permit.
Okay, so they would have to go to ZBA for that.
If they wanted to do overnight food service that was not compliant with hour two AM to six AM, they would need a variance through, uh, the zoning board of appeals because we have regulation about the service of food and beverage not being prohibited, not being allowed during those times.
And, um, the hours that we put on restriction for the vacuum, and I, were those, I, somebody can clarify for me, I'm not sure if that was for the car wash also?
No, vacuum.
Vacuum, would that apply to the vacuum, or they don't need any special permit to use a vacuum, what the?
Well, it's, it's part of the car wash function, so if you had recommendation to the town board about limiting hours as part of the special use permit, certainly you could, the planning board's site plan also, I think, imposed restrictions.
We did have a condition on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would stand.
They also, they also listed the hours, I believe, on the actual plan as well.
Yeah, so the, um, and we can make sure that they're consistent with the application that's being presented to the town board. Um, but those, uh, those, notwithstanding, the, the, the planning board's decision related and conditions related to site plan remain unchanged. So those would still stand.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was.
Clear on, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all I had questions for, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll, I'll start this, unless there's any other discussion.
I think we might wanna put some, um, we might wanna make a positive, but put, um, what do you call those underneath it, that we want to draw the town board's attention to specifically, to consider. Like we did for the last one with the parking and, and other.
But didn't we already do that in our site plan?
Well, yes, but I think that we should.
It's sort of backwards.
Yes.
Feels really funny. Like this should have all happened.
What I'm concerned about without having that motion.
Use the gas station before they got permission to build it.
I gotcha. But what I'm concerned about is if we, if we list things here that are different than what we put on the application, I would rather just refer to everything that's on the app, everything that's been on a prior approval. Cause otherwise.
The town board's not gonna look through our entire approval to get the bullet points that were.
So if you have the specific conditions that were part of the site plan?
Brad's point is that maybe we should discuss that, I think is where you're headed.
I'm, I'm okay, but I wanna, I would rather somebody run them to me, cause I don't have them in front of me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I don't know that we're gonna do all the exact same conditions.
No, and it would have to be conditions that are related to specifically approving the special use. So like, there were a number of things that were, yeah, so these one would be, what should they, if they're considering a special use, what things, what's specific things tied to special use should they be considering, not necessarily the whole site plan.
Right, but what about like the concrete that Alan asked for on the car wash?
That's site plan specific.
They can't change that.
They can't change it.
So.
Just wanted to make sure, that's why I wanted to make sure we didn't miss something.
One that I was considering is the number of special uses requested, so.
So Mr. Mr. Ubar, are you gonna make the motions for a positive?
Well, I wanna go through these first to make sure you're all on the same page. So I think it should be the number of special uses requested because they're requesting two special uses. They're requesting a gas station, and they're requesting a special use for a car wash, which is two times the amount of special use. I think that, and I do think we addressed this in our site plan, is the buffering between the, um, the gas station and the neighboring houses. Another one is impact on the, with the signal and the crosswalks on Culver Road. Is it gonna have a negative impact on the amount of traffic in the neighborhood? I think that we addressed that with the site plan and with the traffic studies, so I think that they're good, but it is something that they should consider for the special use program. It's conformance with the comprehensive plan, including design guidelines. That's something that we considered as well.
Say that again?
The conformance with the comprehensive master plan, inclusive of the design guidelines.
Okay.
The amount of noise, odors, waste, or glare the property may produce.
The number of, I'm sorry.
The amount, I'm sorry, the amount of noise, odors, waste, or glare the property may produce. And the hours of operation.
Yeah, I think, I think the hours of operation one, I, I would advocate to sort of expand that just a little bit to say that the, the town board should review the hours of operations and specifically related to the special uses. Because we only looked at that based on a noise situation for the vacuum. We didn't really think about.
Agree with you completely, Spencer.
That wasn't our purview at that point, and that's why this is backwards to me, and that's what I don't like about.
I would, I, I feel that it shouldn't be allowed to be a twenty-four seven gas station.
Know that.
And car wash, because, you know, we're specifically considering har- how harmonious that this development is gonna be with the existing neighborhood. And, um, you know, an, uh, a, a use that is not subject to a special use would typically not be a twenty-four hour use. So like an unca- uh, uh, um, any, anything that is outright, uh, you know, acceptable in the C business, really wouldn't be a twenty-four hour operation. So like, it's more objectionable, I feel like, to the neighbors to have a twenty-four hour.
And that is that board's purview.
It's not, yeah, they can decide, it's not up to us. I'm just saying that maybe that's something they should consider.
I would, I would agree with that, that we, uh, limit the hours of the car wash to the hours of the vacuum.
Well, I, I think that's, that's on them to decide, right? Cause that's their purview. All we can do is.
No, that's, all we're doing is pointing out that we put those on the vacuum that.
Well, we could maybe list which components they might wanna look at for hours of operation. I would say it's the whole thing, because, uh, at least as far as I know, none of the gas stations south of one oh four are twenty-four hours.
So it's gas station and car wash?
Yeah, and, um, you know, it's.
And accessories.
Gas station, convenience store, uh, you know, cause they might say, okay, the convenience store has to close, but they can still sell gas. And the drive-through. There's a number of things there. I mean, these were all concerns that we did have initially at the site plan review, so it's not like these are coming out of it nowhere. Um, we did our best to mitigate them.
You want the vacuums called out again, or?
I, I, I think I would say, you know, as a bullet point, I would say that, you know, we would advise, or however we write these, that the town board specifically consider and review hours of operations. This board only limited hours of operations to the vacuums.
We could maybe more directly say, consider limiting hours on,
Sure.
all of it, the entire site.
I have no problem with that. I mean, that safety was one of my concerns to begin with. I didn't think we had any control over that at all.
Right, I know. It's because when, I completely agree, all of these things were things that we thought that we didn't have purview of, but now we're finding out we do.
It's a good idea to have a single employee in there, and that's what's gonna happen.
So guys, there's a lot coming out here. So I originally wrote down hours of operations should be reviewed, especially twenty-four by seven for the gas station, convenience, drive-through, car wash, and vacuums. But now you wanna change it, is that what I heard?
We don't wanna change it, we want them to consider it and perhaps think about restricting it.
I think he's just saying, change the language to, instead of just passively saying, review them, say, consider limiting the hours.
And I have no problem with that, and I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Cause that's what we would have said probably upfront if we had done this on the front end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
I, 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 there would have been a number of things, I think. I do think that we've done, we've mitigated most of these, so it shouldn't be an issue when it gets to town board.
The big one to me is operations. That's, that's the big one that we did not really comment a whole lot on because I didn't think we realized we could.
So let me read what I have and see what we have to adjust. I have buffering between the gas station and neighboring houses. That should be the gas station and car wash, right?
Oh, it should be the gas station and the neighboring houses, because those are the, um, impacted, you know, that, that's the neighborhood that it's impacting.
So do you want them to send it back to the planning board for site plan review?
No, I'm asking them to.
I think we're just asking them to consider it and make.
Okay.
Asking them to consider it and make decisions on those items.
And then in my mind, they would look at the site plan and then they would say, oh, you have a berm and pine trees, so you're all set. Unless they don't think so, and then they can make them come back.
Right, cause they could, they could impose more if they wanted to, right? If, if the town, if, if a whole lot of residents show up and they're upset.
Which a lot of, to be honest, a lot of residents did show up and were upset about the exact things that we're talking about right now. Which we thought at the time were out of bounds and so.
I'm just getting clarification, so I'm, I, I understand, so I'm, I'm writing the notes down.
Right, I don't want them to also think that because we imposed. A sanction on the vacuum hours.
Right.
That we did not want that to go on to the um, car wash or any other function that they had going on there.
Right, because we probably.
If we had that ability, we would have limited their out, their operations um, earlier than this.
So I had hours of operations should be reviewed and considered limiting twenty-four by seven operation, gas stations, of the, gas station, convenience store, drive-through, car wash and vacuums.
Yep.
I'm so sorry, you said that super fast. Do you wanna say that back to me so I can?
Okay, so let me go through them all and see if you captured the same thing. So considering the buffering between the gas station and neighboring houses. Hours of operations should be reviewed and consi- and consider limiting. Twenty-four by seven operation. Of the gas station, convenience store, drive-through. Car wash and vacuums. Uh, hours of operations should be reviewed and consider limiting. Twenty-four by seven operation. Of gas station, convenience store, drive-through, car wash and vacuums. I also have traffic study should be reviewed.
Um, I think more generally I would just say um, impacts on Culver Road. If it will require the road to um, become wider, to add um, additional traffic control devices. To uh, reduce the number of crosswalks, um, increase congestion. Or um, require restriping.
So say them all again, so Kerry can catch on to you.
Uh, whether the, if there will be negative impacts on Culver Road. Um, specifically um, widening. Uh, reduction of crosswalks. Increase congestion. If additional traffic control devices will be necessary. And um. If there will, if the road will need to be, there will be a reconfiguration of the road. Like a striping, re-stripe.
Okay. Conformance of design to the master plan inclusive the design guide.
Conformance with the comprehensive master plan including the design guidelines.
And the amount of noise, glare, waste.
Noise, odors, waste or glare the property may produce.
Did you get that Kerry?
I'm catching up now. Now I'm, now I'm in the zone.
And you have one more, right Bernie?
Um, I have the buffering between the gas station, negative impacts on Culver Road, conformance of design in the master plan. The amount of noise, et cetera, hours of operation.
The number of special uses requested. So I think they're requesting two.
Yeah.
Um, car wash and gas station. So I guess they could give them one and not the other, or they could give them both.
Just as another thing, any um, as you go further down on that list of C business, it's actually any. Site that has multiple uses listed in any of the categories above as well. So. That's sort of captured as its own special use is having a multi-use site.
Unless it's a strip mall, right? Thought it said something like da-da-da-da, unless it's something commonly known as a strip plaza.
So you don't need a special use for a plaza, but if you have multiple buildings sep- separate buildings, then you still need the site pla- you need the special use permit. Thank you for that clarification, though.
So Mr. Huber, would you like her to read those back to you, or do you think?
Oh, can't you pass your sheet down here?
What's that?
Can't you pass your sheet down here?
Oh, you're not gonna, you're gonna want her to read the notes. This'll be the check.
Okay, yes, yes, it will be. Um, uh, consider the, well, I'll start with the number of special uses on, on the site. Uh, consider buffering between the gas station um, and gas station facility, gas station and other uses and the neighboring residential areas. If there will be a negative impacts on Culver Road specifically widening, reduction of crosswalks, and if additional. Traffic control devices will be necessary, and if there will be a reconfiguration, reconfiguration of the road required. Hours of operation should be reviewed and limited, oh, and twenty-four and. I'm sorry, I did screw this one up. Um, hours of operation should be reviewed and consider limiting to twenty-four hour operation of gas station, car wash and convenience. Uh, store. Was there also, and?
Drive-through, car wash and.
Drive-through, yeah. Drive-through. Added that. Um, conformance with the master plan, including the design guidelines. Impact of no- on, of noise, odor, waste or, and or glare that the property may produce. And I think that was it.
Do you have vacuums in where uh, limiting hours of operation?
I'll add that in after car wash.
The only thing I think you might have missed was negative impacts on Culver Road. Did you have increased congestion?
Oh, I met, oh, thank you. Apparently it wasn't as much in the zone as I thought it was. Hang on one second.
Mr. Huber, does that cover your motion with a?
Yeah.
A positive, a positive referral with those.
Following, what do we call them, findings?
Condition suggestions.
Findings of fact or whatever.
I don't think we say findings of fact for this particular thing. I think you would indicate a positive referral with the following considerations.
Considerations.
There we go, I like it.
You need me to read that back to you Bernie?
I'm sorry?
You need me to read that? You, you, you need me to make a motion? Are you good?
No, you're good. I'm just looking for a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 We have one recuse passes six. Zero.
I'd move that we adjourn if you're good.
All approved.
I'm so sorry, Chairman, did you second that one?
No, Mr. Richard seconded it.
I apologize, thank you. You asked for it. Thank you.
Bernie can make the.
Adjourned. Oh, my Lord.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Irencoy Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.